Here we go, okay.
Good evening, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the zoning Subcommittee meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Melonazo.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy, two present.
Thank you. The purpose of today, first of all, thank you all for being here. This neighborhoods are very well represented this evening. Thank you for being here. Again, the notice tonight was discussion review of proposed zoning amendments from Development Services. Developmental Services were joined this evening by Eric Slagel, Director of Development Services, and Attorney Gordon from the City Solicitor's Office. In my opinion, it really is an all encompassing notice. So there's a number of things that we've all been talking about for the past few months, be it Airbnb's, definition of lodging houses, micro businesses that we had left over from the last time. What I'd like to do is just to ask Eric to give us an overview of where we are, and then open it up to the general public. We really, as a Subcommittee, want to hear what your hot button items are right now, so that we can deal with them and bring them to the, you know, to the full council in a timely way. So with that, if it's okay with Councilman Noon, I'll ask Eric to open the meeting up and we'll go from there.
Sure. I do want to be very brief. I do know that the members of the neighborhoods have expressed a concern about being able to fully participate in this, so I'll be real quick. I passed out handouts to the Subcommittee and to folks in the audience. I apologize if everybody didn't get one. There are a lot of people here tonight. There are four handouts, and they cover the things that are on the docket for the Subcommittee today. One of the handouts that starts at the top of the front page, it says accessory dwelling unit. I think members of the Subcommittee and folks from the neighborhoods who have been here will recognize, these are the remaining proposed amendments from the large amendment package that was submitted to City Council originally about a year and a half ago. So there are three major amendments having to do with an accessory dwelling unit, micro business, and the tourist home Airbnb issue. So that is the first handout. Those have been talked over a lot, but they did get referred back to the Subcommittee. The second handout, which is somewhat in the same vein as those, is the motion response directed to Councilor Elliott's motion regarding Airbnb regulations. Just to summarize that, that indicated that, as in the previous document, we had proposed some changes to the zoning to try to capture Airbnbs, but the state is now taking this up with state legislation, and the recommendation in that is that we wait until the state act. So that was the kind of the second thing that was on the docket for the zoning Subcommittee. The last two documents are on the same set of issues, which are the issues that were brought by Councilor Kennedy and referred to the zoning Subcommittee, dealing with the definition of boarding or lodging house and the definition of family. So the first document that I prepared includes the current zoning ordinance language for the boarding or lodging house, the definition of family, and the parking requirements for the boarding or lodging house. And I'll defer to Councilor Kennedy about whether I believe that encompasses the things that he was interested in and had referred to the Subcommittee. And if not, obviously, we can provide more information. I do have the zoning code here, but I wanted to prepare this, so we kind of had a breakdown of the specific things that Councilor Kennedy was looking for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilor Kennedy.
If I could, just briefly. So the motion was aimed at trying to find a solution to the problem that's existing in Patacaville and probably in other neighborhoods as well regarding people that are buying homes and then turning them into boarding houses, and never having licenses, by the way, for that. And so I think the motion asks that we look at the definition of families, and what constitutes a family, and also just the definition of boarding or lodging houses, and the grid. And today, I think we all received a communication from Mr. O'Brien, which suggested that maybe those should just be outlawed in single-family district altogether. I don't know if you got that, but I think I remember the, okay.
No, I did not get that. So just very quickly, the last piece of paper is the state statute that defines lodging houses, and the definition of lodging houses at the state level. So I wanted to include that as well. So I know that the chairman, you had mentioned that you wanted to hear from the council, but I wanted to kind of give a breakdown. Those are the things that were in front of the Subcommittee today, and I'm obviously, I'm here for whatever the Subcommittee wishes.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy.
So are you suggesting that those are governed by state law, and that we can't amend the zoning code?
No, I just include, so the definition of boarding and lodging house in our zoning code is identical, it is the state statute, because we, the License Commission regulates boarding and lodging houses through the state licensing process.
Okay.
So we, we can't change the state statute, so we can't require state licensing for something that's not defined in the state statute.
All right. Are you saying that we cannot make it be more stringent than what the state statute says?
I would defer that to the Law Department, but the state statute is very clear about what requires licensing under the state statute. I don't know whether or not the Law Department is...
So you're not sure whether we can do that or not, right? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. I don't know if the Law Department has looked at that.
I'm not aware that we've looked into that issue. We would need to do some research on that, to see if the state statute preempts municipalities in this area, and requires that the state code is what needs to be complied with. So I would have to do some research to see if we, as a municipality, could make the requirements more stringent than what the state code provides.
Okay, fair enough. But we also could prohibit them from certain zoning districts, though, right?
Absolutely. And we do. We have a very limited number of zoning districts that licensed boarding houses are allowed in.
Well, I think that the problem is, you know, I'm sure that there was a definition for lodging and boarding houses at one time that was valid. But in recent years, there's this phenomenon that's gone on, where people are buying properties, and I don't think it's just because they're in close proximity to the university, but buying properties and then just leasing it out almost by room, rather than by even dwelling unit. And so that's, the motion is aimed at coming up with a solution to that problem, which just seems to get worse and worse, rather than, it isn't something that's just debated or is just stopped, it just seems to get worse and worse. And it seems to me that you must have, you must have heard about this before, right? Have you got, have you had any complaints about this?
We regularly get complaints about, they fall under several different issues. Overcrowding of, you know, singular multifamily properties, illegal rooming houses being occupied in, usually those are multifamily properties, but sometimes in single-family properties. We get complaints about that on a regular basis, and our inspectors go out and do their best to do those investigations.
All right. But I think we have properties up in those neighborhoods, and probably in other neighborhoods, where people are utilizing the property as if it was a boarding house, but they're not calling it a boarding or a lodging house, and therefore, they're not getting a license for a boarding or a lodging house. I mean, several weeks ago, when I put this motion in, I asked for a list of all of the boarding houses in the city, and there really weren't. I was kind of surprised at how few there were, compared to maybe 20 years ago. So there aren't that many. But just because they're not licensed doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of properties that are, that are being utilized in that way. And then also, if I could, what about in-law apartments? And, you know, that seems to be a problem, and I think the problem ends up being like this. I can understand that there are probably situations in which the best solution for certain families is to have an in-law apartment for several reasons. However, once that reason expires, then that property should not continue to be able to have a in-law apartment. And so I think the problem there might be that, if you're going to have an in-law apartment, you should have to have it registered or licensed every year, just to make sure that it's still, there's still a valid reason, a legitimate reason, to have that in-law apartment, so that you don't take a single-family house, and all of a sudden, it morphs into a two-family house because it was granted an in-law apartment, and then the reason for the in-law apartment no longer exists, and so now you've got a two-family, right? It's, go ahead.
Right. So just to be clear, in-law apartments in the City of Lowell are not allowed. You cannot get authorization from any department in the city to put in an in-law apartment. We had put forward the accessory dwelling unit, the proposal for the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, that would have allowed a mechanism for exactly what you're saying, which is regular inspections, a registration, and a return to a single-family state when the need for an in-law apartment was gone. So right now, you cannot, you cannot have an in-law apartment.
But there are in-law apartments.
So what, what people do is, instead of creating an in-law apartment, they create a section of the house that isn't a separate apartment, but has separate facilities, without a locking door in between those two units. And so it's not two units, I apologize, I misspoke, without a locking door between those two areas. So you turn your sunroom into a bedroom and a kitchenette, without a locking door in between. And because of case law that arises from the Ernie Bach case, actually, where we can't prevent someone from putting multiple kitchens in a house, as long as they're not creating separate units, and that means a separate means of egress, and so people do that, and we can't stop them. There's no, there's no way we can keep them from doing that, and they can have that whether there's an in-law living there or not.
What I'm suggesting is that sometimes those morph into a separate dwelling unit, whether it's locked or not, it just, that happens.
Right, and so...
And I know of instances in the city where that occurs right now.
I agree with you. And if we, if those are reported to us, we go out and issue violations in order to the property owners to restore it to a single-family state.
Okay, well, what I'm suggesting is that maybe we need to do something with the zoning ordinance, in order to give you more enforcement capabilities than what you have right now.
Yeah. And so the accessory dwelling unit proposal that we came up with was kind of a comprehensive plan to try to deal with that. I do know it was originally requested, a former counselor, Dan Rourke, had requested that we look into a way to enact something like this. I don't want to speak for the neighborhoods, I know they have a lot of feelings about that. The neighborhood groups had some serious reservations about going forward with that, which is why it was referred back to the Subcommittee. So that's why it's still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Councilman Noon, I just want to mention that the mayor was just here, he just got called out, Mayor Samaras, Councilor Elliott is here, thank you, and Councilor Cirillo is here as well. The chair would like to recognize Councilman Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, we do have, we do have the rooming house in the city, and you do identify it and have a list of them as well, is that correct?
That is correct. They're required to be licensed by the License Commission, and I believe Councilor Kennedy was provided with that information, but if anybody wants that information, it's public record.
Right, right. And we do, we do regularly do inspection and enforcement of those rooming houses.
They're required to have inspections in order to maintain their license, that's correct.
I think it sounds like, Councilor Kennedy, it sounds like the issue is the illegal rooming house that we are talking about, and that's where it's, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like it's difficult to enforce, from what, you know, the inspectional people kind of indicated. But there needs to be a way that we can really strengthen the zoning. I know that tonight, the Inspector Service, Eric's here, you know, have really detailed defined the accessory dwelling unit, which is certainly go a long way in helping for the single family that turn into, possibly turn into, rooming house. So I think going forward, I know, I know we're going to hear complaint, we're going to hear concern, not complaint, concern, I'm sorry, from the neighborhood group around this issue, particularly those who live near the universities, and the, where, you know, this single home, or maybe two-family home, or three, turn into, bought by the developers, or, you know, it turn into a rooming house, illegal rooming house, and that's a concern, and how we go about enforcing that. So I'd like to hear more.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the public, Councilor Elliott, as I mentioned, is here, and he actually had a motion a couple of weeks ago, asking the city man to provide a report regarding Airbnb zoning regulations and rental units to students. So I don't know if Councilor Elliott just wants to share some of his thoughts before we open it up to the public.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of reports that I received, the latest one on student housing, but, you know, I personally feel that this is a, it clearly has become a problem, I think it's a significant problem. I think it's a significant problem that we didn't anticipate with the expansion of UMass Lowell. And if you go into the neighborhoods, and it's not just, it's just not exclusive to Patacaville, by the way. I can recount a story on Acton Street, where it's a single-family home, it's being rented out to six or seven individuals. So, you know, overcrowding is one thing, but it comes with noise, it comes with parking, and I think it's a big problem. And we need to strengthen our zoning code somehow, or enforcement. I had also asked to get a motion, to get a report on the status of inspecting our units throughout the city. I know there is a three-year, every three years, they have to be inspected. You know, someone mentioned about inspecting the boarding houses. There's supposed to be an inspection every time that the apartment is re-rented or rented again, correct?
No, the ordinance was changed. Originally, it was a vacancy ordinance, where if the apartment became vacant, then there had to be an inspection. That was amended, so it had to be inspected every three years, regardless of whether there was a change in tenancy, because the landlords just weren't telling us when there was a vacancy.
Right.
And we would have no way of knowing. So we changed the council.
So what is the status of the inspecting units every, every three years?
So we're in the midst of preparing that report, and I anticipate having that for the City Council.
Okay. I mean, I think that's, that's clearly not the answer, because it's being done, you know, in the middle of the night. They're renting out rooms, and neighbors know about it, and it seems like our hands are tied. You look at Livingston Ave, there's a home that went into an undersized lot, and it's been nothing but problems. The police have been up there multiple times. We get people leaving the city, and they just keep renting it out, there's drug dealing going on, and neighbors have had it. So, you know, what can we do other than consistently use resources on homes and their rentals? They're coming and they're going. I'm not sure if it's close to the university, so it could be or not, but as we mentioned at the last meeting, how do I, we identify if somebody's paying rent or not, or if they're a family or not? I mean, I know you're gonna, I know we had the discussion about people have rights, well, so do the neighbors. And if they think that someone is living there, and they're renting a room, then how do we go about addressing it? Because I think we're way behind the eight ball on this, and it's just gonna, it's just gonna snowball if we don't, you know, if we don't start to enforce, and how do we enforce that? What is the mechanism?
Right. So I think you've touched on some of the issues, and again, I don't want to monopolize the microphone, but some of the issues about the boarding houses are enforcement issues. We have had meetings recently with the university, in an effort to try to get their help in both identifying the scope of the problem, and some suggestions to them as to how they could be helpful in handling the problem. They, and this is something I think is good for everybody to know, which is, there's an agreement between UMass Lowell Police and Lowell Police, the City of Lowell Police. If there is a disturbance at a property, and the Lowell Police are called and go to the property because of a disturbance, either because of noise, or a party, or some other disturbance, and they make a determination that they believe it's students from UMass Lowell, they immediately inform the UMass Lowell Police. The UMass Lowell Police go out to the property, and they have a, kind of a, an internal process by which they can enforce things against students. I think that, so I think they actually encourage people, if there is a disturbance and you believe it's students, call the police, because that will get the UMass Lowell Police involved, and then the university will know about it. Otherwise, the university doesn't know about it. But going back to your other point...
Okay, on that point, how does that address the fact that they're living there, and they're not supposed to be living there? What is the university going to do about that?
Well, I mean, I think that would be a question for the university. The information I have, and this is, again, subject to a lot of change, because it changes every time a new student population comes in. The university has approximately 5,000 beds on campus. Their enrollment is right around 18,000 students. So the remaining 13,000 students that aren't housed in on-campus properties are either commuter students, who are living at home and commuting into Lowell, or they are students who are living in our neighborhoods. The question is, what is the best way to respond to that reality? The university has empty beds this year. They have not, their dorms are not full, so it's not a case necessarily of the, of people being told that the university doesn't have enough places for them to sleep, and them having to go and find their own housing. They don't, they haven't filled up their dorms, so they have, I think they're probably at like 8%, empty right now. And folks are not, folks are living in the neighborhoods for whatever reason, and whether that is a, because it's a price point, because it's cheaper to rent, or, I mean, so the reasons exist that they live there. They, I think the question is, I think you've identified some of the symptoms, which are noise. I think parking is a problem... symptoms, which are noise, I think parking is a problem, although that's a, that's a challenge regardless of whether it's students or not. And how do we enforce those ordinances in a way that makes it?
And there clearly are parking issues. I mean, Council Elliot brought up Livingston, I mean, clearly there are parking issues. I know there's a lot of dormitories across Middlesex Street, whether or not the students are parking on Livingston and walking across Middlesex Street. But again, I really do want to open it up for the public.
Yeah, and I won't, we know what the symptoms are. I mean, if there are dorms open, we know. They either don't want to live on campus, or they're going somewhere cheaper, but it's a problem. So I want to go back to, what can we do other than using resources on a regular basis? And that house on Livingston Street, I just keep going, this is going on, I'm gonna say for three years now, and that at all levels, to me, is wrong. If I were living next to that home, it would just be, it'd be frustrating, and the neighbors are frustrated, and it's not just happening, you know, I think this is an extreme case, but why? Why? What can we do about it? We talk about enforcement, enforcing noise, or this and that. The problem is that they're being, it's being rented out, and I think that's the issue. You know, what can we do about it? And I, I mean, I guess I'm pressing the issue because this is where it is. It's not why they're in the neighborhoods, they're in the neighborhoods, and they're causing multiple problems, and we need to do something about it, or I think it's gonna just be exacerbated.
Thank you, and that's why we're obviously meeting this evening, we'll have future meetings, and we just absolutely want to hear now from the residents, because since we last met, and we had three items to talk about, the Airbnb, the micro businesses, and the accessory dwelling units, this has morphed into something bigger, from the standpoint of a problem in all of our neighborhoods, so.
Can I just ask one more question? What are other communities doing about this? Do we have any idea? I mean, I know Airbnb is more of a bigger problem in Boston.
Boston is dealing with it now.
You know, it's hotels, and it's other things, I don't think that's as much of an issue yet. But what about housing, student housing, or is it just so, you know, acceptable, and maybe they don't have as many single-family homes, and I think that's probably, that's the issue we just nailed, it's renting of rooms in single-family neighborhoods.
I think, and this is, so what I believe is happening is, as we all know, 10, 12 years ago, UMass Lowell was not the university that it is now. It was primarily, I mean, it was a commuter school, and they changed their model, and water is seeking its level. Landlords are seeing economic opportunities because of the change in the university's dynamic. And whereas before, there wasn't a push to live close to campus, because it was a commuter school, and there wasn't a mass of students that were there that you wanted to hang out with, or there was a social scene, now there is, and I think the other cities and towns in Massachusetts either have already dealt with this many years ago, and just have a certain number of places where students live, because they have universities that are residential universities, and the neighborhoods around them are student-housing neighborhoods. We weren't that, and this is a change, and the question is, is it possible to, A, make it, you know, economically?
Disadvantage.
Yeah, is there an economic disadvantage that we can give to prevent these properties from being flipped the way they're being flipped? Because I think that's what the neighborhoods want, is they want the single-family home to not get bought up by a developer and turned into rental units. But is that the answer, and how do we do that? I think that we need to have ideas as to how to do that. Is it through some greater regulation? I mean, if landlords are going to do the greater regulations because they're making money, or is it through some other means? We can't control the form of ownership of a property. We can't say, you have, this has to be owner-occupied, or it can't. That's absolutely not possible, so we can't say.
No, but if it's a single-family home, there has to be, our zoning codes do include provisions that there have to be a family relationship. You can't buy a single-family home and rent it out to seven college students.
Right, so our definition of family is no more than three unrelated persons. That just comes down to enforcement, and we could spend a whole hour talking about that.
Chair wants to recognize Council Cirillo, then I do want to open it up to the residents who are here. Thank you, Council Elliot, Council Cirillo.
Hi, yes. I understand that UMass Lowell has grown, and it's been very fluid in having more students come into the city as it has grown. But it seems like, what it seems to me is that the city stopped doing what they were doing, instead of being fluid with the university. And what we now need to do is we need to protect our residents and their interests, and we're playing catch-up. And that, to me, is, it doesn't work. So now we're kind of being reactive versus proactive in taking care of our residents, because we weren't fluid with the influx that UMass Lowell has. So I think now we need to, we need to say, this is what's happening. How are we going to improve and fix what's happening, and improve the living situation for our residents?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, I would like to now open it up to the residents, and the chair would recognize Deb Forgione from the Patacaville Citizens Council. Are you also present on the citywide?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, no, actually, Marie is this year.
Oh, okay.
They're our assistant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so here is the zoning map, I always like visuals.
This is not that complicated. If you live in Lowell, everybody knows what we're talking about. It is not a mystery. It's not a big formula to try to figure out, everybody knows how bad it is. There's not one person in here that hasn't experienced it. It's not a mystery, and it shouldn't be a mystery to solve it. We are smarter than that. We are Lowell. There is nothing we don't solve. We are problem solvers. This is a problem, we all know it, we've been coming here, talking about it, we need someone, a captain of the ship, that knows how to solve the problem. It's that simple. And there isn't one neighborhood that doesn't go through it. And the reason that I wanted to speak tonight is because, you know, usually when we come to these meetings, we are respectful, you know, we listen to everyone, but you really have to hear the neighbors. It wouldn't be a mystery if you hear the neighbors. If you went around to the neighborhood, all the meetings, and listened to every single meeting that we have, I don't think there's any counselor in here that hasn't been to a meeting, we don't spend the whole time talking about this. So we know it's a problem, it's gotten worse, it's solvable, if you can just get down with the law department and figure out, you know what the problem is, then solve it. Ed Kennedy, you nailed it when you came in, exactly what the problem is. Rewrite the ordinance, get something that people can't skirt in and out of, and then enforce it. And if you can't enforce it, then you need more enforcement. If you're saying you can't do it, then what do we need? We need it, then make a recommendation, go to the city council, and say, we can't do it. To keep saying, month after month, we can't, we can't, we can't, we have to. And I just want to go over a couple of things, so that I don't want to take all the time. But yesterday, we were supposed to go to a planning board meeting, because a petitioner wants to change their zoning. And the reason they want to is because they've been a subject of significant code enforcement activity about a year ago, and it seems to indicate that his primary reason for the rezoning request is to enable him to continue to operate the boarding house at the property that may have been operating in spite of zoning prohibitions for some time. That's actually in a request to change zoning, and it had to go through the city clerk's office. So this property that's saying, well, we want to change the zoning, has been in violation all these years, and there's not one resident here that doesn't know about that property. We all laugh about it, everybody knows that he does. And actually, he calls himself a boarding house, and we just found out that he's actually paying taxes as a boarding house. So do you see how big the problem is? It's more that you can, all right, so that's yesterday, but just by saying that this is a problem, we've come out, we've finally put enough foot down, we're not taking it anymore, we're making a big issue out of it, and so all the emails come in, and people keep telling you, okay, I'm not gonna give the addresses, because it's not fair, but I'm gonna tell you the streets. Ellis Ave., Varnum Ave., Linden Ave. Hmm, there we go here. Plymouth, Mount Hope. Let's see, we got here, oh, this one. Riverside and Martin Street. I have, let's see, he made 13 bedrooms out of his two-family, and rents the rooms heated. There are about 20 kids drinking beers at the end of the semester on the corner a couple of weeks ago. He tells the color of the house. That's going on. It's every, it's on almost every street. This one here, okay, so this one here, the fact that they're rooming houses, here's the problem, because they actually use them as little apartments, they have cooking, like, plates in the rooms. So there's no sprinkler systems, if you've ever had a fire. If we all know about it, and we all talk about it, it can't keep being said that it's a mystery. Why is this becoming popular? Because it can, and they're doing it. And we've got people here that have had next-door neighbors' houses across the street that have to call the city and shut it down. There should be a report every single month of the houses that people are reporting, and then what happened, what happened to that property. If he gets calls, the fact that there's not a list or a report, you'd have to say to yourself, well, why not? They've been hearing about it for about three years. There are people that habitually are doing it, you shut them down, and they go back and do it again. So it is not a mystery, we can do better, everybody knows that it's a problem, and there has to be, every month, to know what happened to the people that got reported on. And if we know that there are people, like, on Martin Street, renting out 13 bedrooms in a two-family, if we know it, everybody knows it. So, and the reason I brought the zoning is that there's residential, there's multifamily, there's institutional. It's a city that has learned to coexist with businesses, and schools, and residents. What you're doing is you're taking away the neighborhoods, piece by piece, and it's gotta stop, and we're asking for your help, and I know you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Just a quick question for Mr. Sligell. The proposed changes to the ordinance that we've been reviewing now for close to a year, would they be the first step in trying to curb this problem? Or are we talking, you know, again, just to make it a stricter ordinance, and again, I'm not looking to grandfather anybody, if anything, I would say, if the police get called, they actually get a bill for the police service. I mean, the landlord needs to start paying if the problems, properties become such a nuisance, which they obviously have. So we do need to strengthen it, but I just don't know if the current accessory dwelling unit as proposed will get us where we need to be.
I don't think that the accessory dwelling unit ordinance would necessarily help. I think the kind of problems that we're hearing from the folks here, because they're talking about, that's designed to help the folks who live in a single-family neighborhood, who have a relative that they need to take in, and needs to live with them. It's not designed, and nor would we want to try to make an avenue to legalize, I mean, to legalize illegal activity that's going on, that's having the kind of detrimental effects to the neighborhoods.
You mentioned in your response to Council Elliot's motion that the state's now looking at doing something, and you've recommended that we wait until the state regulations.
Right, for Airbnb, I absolutely think that's correct. And that's, you know, that's, we're talking about short-term rentals for transient visitors into the city. What I think the neighborhoods are identifying is a property that may not have been a rental property, being bought by someone who is turning it into a rental property and renting it out to a large number of folks. So that identifies, I think, two problems. Number one, the owner-occupied nature of the property is going away. And I think that one of the reasons why we have the rental ordinance that Council Elliot was talking about, and put in an exemption for owner-occupied properties, is I believe people generally see owner-occupied properties as being less of a problem than non-owner-occupied properties. But all these properties, I think that the neighborhoods are identifying are having, you know, landlord businesses coming and buying properties and turning them into rentals, where there's a property management company that operates it, but there's nobody on-site, and there's probably nobody that you can get in touch with at night when there's a party. So that touches the ownership problem, which I, we have, I mean, I'm not sure there's anything that can be done about the ownership problem. The second part is either overcrowding, or violation of the definition of family that's in the zoning ordinance.
Enforcement issue.
And that is an enforcement issue, and I am open for ideas as to enforcement, because we have a challenge, if we go to a landlord, a rental property, even if we know it's a four-bedroom, and in all likelihood, a four-bedroom that's rented out to students is gonna be in violation of the definition of family by a zoning ordinance. We, it is very difficult for us to get sufficient evidence to write a violation for that, because of the privacy rights of the property owners, and because of the kind of impossibility of determining levels of kindred between people who are living in a property.
But, you know, what we do in the public housing side, if I could be so bold, is that we actually do a US mail search. So if you have an address, and you do a US mail search, and it goes back that Jim Monazo and Rodney Elliott and Eric Sligell are living on Livingston Street, you know, and we're getting our mail there, I mean, that's a tool that you can use in housing court to say that they're not related. I mean, again, you doing a US mail search helps us as an enforcement agency to deal with problem tenants. Again, Emery Page wants to come to the microphone, I just want to recognize that Council Conway is here. Thank you, Council Conway, for being here as well. Good evening, Mrs. Page.
Hello, my name is Anne Marie Page. I'm getting over laryngitis, so some words work better than others. As far as 13 bedrooms, you can find that in Webster Dictionary under M for motel. Not something that should be in a neighborhood. And since UMass has plenty of beds, maybe they don't want to stay at UMass dorms, because they have rules and regulations, where if they get their own apartment, they don't have rules and regulations. But everybody in this room is here for the same reason, to protect our neighborhoods. This is where we live with our families. The ULow students will come in and go out and be long gone, we're still gonna be here. And we all know what the problem is, just like Debbie said. And I'd get real nervous if I had a house with frequent flyers from the police department. I would think if you call the police department and give them that address, they'll tell you exactly how many times they've been up there visiting. And so, but one thing that I do know, I don't know if you looked into it, I'm sure you have, but I do know, if you have a lodging house or a boarding house in Lowell, it has to be inspected by the fire department, and it has to be registered with the fire department, with their fire prevention. So I don't know if all these landlords have done that. You can check, but that might be another way to get in the door and take out 33 and put in three. But you've got to, it's, we all know the problem, you've just got to find the way to do it. And I do think that fire department might be a big help for you to be able to say, you can't have 33, you can have four, or three, whatever it is. And Mr. Kennedy, you spoke of in-law apartments, and I know to some, it is a question. We have two that I'm aware of, O'Ncentreeville and Christian Hill, they have worked very well for the families, because one had a crippled child. By the in-laws being able to make the household a little longer and move in, the grandparents can help care for the crippled child, so the parents can work. And another one, mother-in-law became a widow, and she, they were able to add on a small amount for her to have a little studio apartment, and therefore, she could stay there. It's the same thing. If you follow the rules, and you do something the right way, it's not bad. This is very careless, and I don't think these property owners really care about the neighbors or the neighborhood, and that's where we have to pull the plug. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Anyone else? John? Before John comes to the microphone, Council Mercy had just entered the hall. Thank you, Council Mercy, for being here. Good evening, John.
Good evening, John Hamblit, 495 Varnum Avenue.
Good evening, John Hamblit, 495 Varnum Avenue. Just a little bit of research. The thing that we're talking about is called a stealth dormitory. It's a nationwide problem. Google it, and you'll find that many cities across the United States have a problem with a company that comes in, buys a home, and converts the three-bedroom house into nine students that they're charging $700 to $1,000 a month for. Generally, it's been agreed that the problems that result include not just traffic volume and parking problems, but it's now unsafe walking, unsafe cycling conditions for neighborhood children, there are widespread noise disturbances, overflowing trash, and poor sanitation conditions, overburdened sewage systems, dangerous living conditions for the residents of those buildings. It changes the character of your neighborhood, and it lowers property values. There are several cities that are looking at not only new enforcement, and I agree with Councilors Noon and Councilors Elliott, that the two issues are better enforcement and better zoning laws. You've already heard some of the enforcement opportunities that we may not be taking advantage of. There is a new legal term called single housekeeping unit. It is the functional equivalent of a family, and it's being used to replace terms in zoning laws in order to prevent this from happening. Six individual students do not make up a single housekeeping unit, as it's defined in the laws and the regulations in many cities across the United States. I think there is an opportunity for us to do a ground-level-up review of our zoning regulations, and maybe some of the terms that we use themselves could be changed, and that would help us create a better foundation for enforcement to take place. So better enforcement, new zoning laws, not just an amendment of the existing regulations.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Tom Flynn, 39 Waterford Street. And in my neighborhood, recently, a house was impounded after a gun incident. Next thing you know, it's been auctioned off, I guess. They start with a foundation next to it. Foundation goes in. Work stops. Now, apparently, it got auctioned off again, and that person immediately put the building up on that foundation. What are you supposed to going to happen with this? And we never go back on somebody and say, "You weren't supposed to dig the hole, fill it in." But foundation goes, next thing, building goes. This will be a problem, and it's on Ellis Avenue. We have great concern that a house that just sold on Oxford Street has extra land to it. Supposedly, the person buying it has a son or daughter who's going to go to the university. Nice to be able to afford that, by the way. That's really good. I had a hard time with tuition for my kids, but just saying. So with these things that go on, and a quick, "Oh, we could tear down this garage, and we could put up another house here," and it's fine if a guy is rich enough to just have his kid come in. You can bet your sneakers there's going to be more people than that child. So this is where some of this problem begins, and there has to be a much closer watching of what's going on with that, because we just keep creating more and more situations. And of course, these things are all in Patacaville, all in my neighborhood. And as I said not that long ago to Deb, am I getting paranoid or what? But it's like all around you. It just grows, and then you have the problem. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Councilor Kennedy?
So I would like to offer a motion, if I could, and I think this. I think that the assumption that owner-occupied properties are less of a problem than non-owner-occupied problems is just, I don't know that that's necessarily valid all of the time. But also, I would point out that the list that I have of all the boarding houses in the city, there are none located in Patacaville. None. And so if there are none located in Patacaville, then anything like a boarding house, whether it's operating like a boarding house in Patacaville or in other areas of the city, is a stealth dormitory, if I can use that term, which is also an illegal boarding house. So I would like to offer a motion to have the city manager request that the Department of Planning and Development, and the Law Department, and your department, Eric, generate some changes to the zoning code, which will prevent boarding houses in single-family neighborhoods and anywhere where they don't belong. And also, look at the parking regulations, because if you're going to have a boarding house, there should be parking regulations that would go along with that, I think. I realize that the boarding houses that are in the city now, for the most part, are probably all grandfathered, but I think going forward for boarding houses or lodging houses, there needs to be some parking accommodations. And that they just be... And that stealth dormitories or boarding houses or whatever just be eliminated from the single-family neighborhood altogether, no matter what it's called. And, you know, I don't think that you can pin this all on the university. I think, you know, maybe some of it is from the university, but this is not the university's problem. This is our problem, and it's something that we have to deal with. And I think that if we're going to deal with it, then we have to come up with stronger regulations than what we have right now. And I probably would just offer suggestions on what those regulations would be. However, earlier in the discussion, we've got to be in compliance with the state law, I guess. So I think it's best to wait and come back with that. So the motion should be to have... To request that the city manager have the Division Planning and Development, and the Law Department, and your department generate some solutions to the stealth dormitory problem and the in-law problem and parking regulations, and report back to this subcommittee in, say, three weeks' time, which I think is reasonable, which I think would be probably June 12th. And so I would offer that as a motion.
I would second the motion, and also want to add that the real issue here is turning, you know, the illegal turning of a traditional single home and apartment into a rooming house. And that certainly invites all those issues that Speaker spoke of, the issues of, you know, party noise, noise, and traffic, and so on and so forth. And so this motion proposed by Councilor Kennedy, I know that Councilor Elliott did that as well last week with the Airbnb. This kind of motion tying the ordinance for the zoning ordinance for the city, giving the opportunity to the inspection service a tool to really enforce this issue, because it's not about rooming house, per se. This is illegally turning the single home into a rooming house, and that's the problem. I think it's a major problem, and we need to get a hold of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
I know we're running out against the time. Mr. Chairman, can another neighbor, do you want to speak from Livingston Street real
Thank you, councilors. I know some of you got the email I sent earlier. I'm Jim O'Brien from Livingston Avenue. We have several properties on our street that have different issues. Mr. Sligle, he is aware, and so are the police, of the property at the corner of Princeton and Livingston. But I want to talk about the one next to me, because it's really an investor who came in and bought the house. And he rents it to a primary tenant, and she can't really afford the rent, so she's been renting rooms. So you've got people coming and going. So he buys a single-family home as an investor because he sees that he can make money somehow. I don't know what he was thinking for down the road. It is close to the university. And my thought is that if you want to rent out your TSF-zone, single-family home, you need to prove that all the residents are related. The proof should not be on developmental services. So one thing you can do is institute a rental permit in these zones to make the landlord comply with the zoning laws. You don't comply, no permit. You've got to renew your permit periodically. You break the law, you get a heavy fine. You know, I'm PO'd as much as everyone else here, because the neighborhood's changing. People are putting their houses up for sale. 27 years the guy lives here, he's putting his house up for sale. These single-family homeowners, if they want to rent out their homes, they need to comply or a heavy fine, because what they do understand is money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. What I'd like to just say before we vote is that the timeliness of the motion and the timeliness of this issue is such that, as chairman, I'd be happy to call a zoning subcommittee meeting every month, once we get the report. And if we can't do it on a Tuesday night, because Tuesday nights are busy, we can do it on another weeknight and/or a Saturday morning, just to try to get this done, resolved, before the start of another school year in August or September. So we need to get this done in a timely manner. So with that, Mr. Clerk, can we please call a roll?
Councilor Mullenazl?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Three yeses.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Again, thank you all for being here, and we will meet again.
To adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Noon. All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.